Okay, that's off.
Hey Kartik, can you, whoa, can you turn me way down? Hey Kartik, can you hear us okay? Are the microphones on? Eliza? Hey Kartik, can you hear us okay? Let's make sure. Hey Kartik, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you all right. How are you?
Perfect. How are you?
I'm well. Thank you for sitting this late, Greg.
Absolutely.
And good evening to the board as well.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and joint, uh, start. Yeah, I will call the meeting to order. The joint meeting of the Buildings and Standards Commission and the Edelman City Council is Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four. And the time is six oh one. If everybody please rise for a moment and sign by the pledge of allegiance. First item, citizens' comments. Do we have any? Okay, no citizens' comments. Uh, city council meeting is recessed. The time is six oh two. A deliberation and determination on cases. Case number one. One, three, nine, four, continuation, deferred decision. This will be for the Paradise Apartments, nine two nine Corey Road, Edelman, Texas. Nine two eight Corey Road, Edelman, Texas. Nine seventeen Corey Road, Edelman, Texas. And nine oh one Corey Road, Edelman, Texas. And finally, nine hundred Corey Road, Edelman, Texas.
All right, and then. Board members, before we move forward with anything, uh, we do have a staff recommendation of a continuance for forty-five days. The reason why we're requesting a continuance for forty-five days on this is due to a staffing issue. Uh, the inspector that originally performed the inspection on this property that produced the original report is no longer serving with Bureau Veritas. Uh, ownership has complied with everything that we've asked since our last meeting. They have been very cooperative with us, providing all the necessary information. Uh, after receiving that, Chief Watley was trying to get the inspector to review it, as agreed upon, to provide comments back and make sure that that list was all inclusive. After a couple of weeks of trying, Chief Watley finally reached out to supervisors over there informing them that we haven't received a response. That's when Bureau Veritas advised us that that inspector no longer works there, and we had to get a new inspector assigned on this. Um, so it's caused some delays, uh, on our side, and we're working with, uh, ownership representation now to iron out the last few things, but have no reason to believe why forty-five days wouldn't be more than ample to wrap this up and come back with a negotiated settlement as, as discussed at the prior meeting. So our staff recommendation to allow us to do this is gonna be a forty-five day continuance on that.
Any questions or comments?
And then also for your knowledge, for a motion that may come across, forty-five days would take this to the October twenty-second. Council meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Have they given you a list of timelines? Like we asked?
So what, the steps were supposed to be from the last meeting was they were gonna provide a list of items to be addressed within the scope of work. They've provided that list as asked. But the next step was, is our inspector was going to review that list and respond to that list and say that, yes, this list is all encompassing. We're good. Let's move forward. Unfortunately, that's the step we've got hung up on is on, is on our side, not ownership's side. Regardless of that, ownership has shared that they've already been working on developing a scope regardless of our response, and they keep moving forward. So I, I do have faith in what they're saying, that they are showing good faith in trying to make repairs. They are showing good faith in trying to get the scope ready to go. I think that they'll be prepared. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kartik, in stating that, I think they'll be well-prepared, uh, by October twenty-second to provide that, as long as we can get over this hump that we've got right now with the inspector change.
That's right, and you appreciate, um, Mr. Spencer's candor and collaborations in this process. We are, uh, I did speak with Ms. Morris yesterday about the inspection as well with the Bureau Veritas inspector, having an opportunity to come onto the property and put eyes on, uh, the original inspection notes, as well as a meeting with our engineer to ask any questions, see the property in, in real, real-time and for itself. From a scope standpoint, we anticipate finalizing and executing a contract for a majority of the work by the end of the month, which would include a rebuild of the six burn units, which I know has sort of been outside, excuse me, some of the scope of, of the previous hearings here. But, you know, to, to rebuild those units up to current code, obviously, because those things have been cutted, uh, with the necessary permits, as well as within that contract to do much of the rest of the structural components that we had identified previously in exchange with the city, including the floor joints, um, in the buildings that were inspected by Childress found to need replacement. So that contract and majority of, which is, majority of the work will be finalized and anticipated, anticipated to be signed by the end of this month for, with a third-party contractor. The remainder of the work is going to be subject to the discussion of the Bureau Veritas inspector and Childress. And once they are able to reconcile the scope of some of the electrical and mechanical items, that will be subject to a different bid, just because the general contractor dealing with the structural components and the rebuild of those units is just a different trade than a few of the electrical and mechanical issues. And so once that gets reconciled, we can be able to provide a, very quickly go get bids and sign a contract for the appropriate scope of work for those issues. And happy to answer any other questions should the board have any.
Any questions for me? Okay, again, I do just wanna highlight this was an error on our side. So that's, that's the reason for the continuance.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I believe we approve a forty-five day continuance on this matter. With, uh, October twenty-second being the continuation. Case number one, three, thank you. I'm looking right at it. Uh, continuance of case number one, three, nine, four. With October twenty-second being the, um, next committee meeting where we will discuss and take action. Is that good?
That good enough.
Okay.
Second.
Motion invited, seconded. Dean, for a discussion. Let's call the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks Kartik.
Thank you very much, and thank you all on the board. I hope everyone has a wonderful evening, and we will, uh, obviously be in touch with you, Mr. Spencer, and we'll see all of the rest of your October for twenty-second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will adjourn the Buildings and Standards Commission meeting, and the Edelman City Council meeting is reconvened. Discussion items, item A. Municipal League, Region Eight Director Election.
Okay, it's that time of year again where it's time to cast some ballots associated with TML. Uh, the first one being the Region Eight Director Election. We are within Region Eight. I did include in your packet the candidates or nominees for that position for your consideration. Uh, the ballots are due back by the end of the month. We do not necessarily have to submit a ballot, but just keep in mind, if you don't submit a ballot, then obviously your, your vote wouldn't count. So just something to consider. Not asking you to take action on this tonight, just wanted to share it with you, address any questions that you might have. Um, and then we'll ask the city attorney to draft a resolution, filling in your appointee at the next council meeting. Any questions?
So, uh. Out of the four, only one of them has reached out to us, and he is the incumbent. Was asking for our support, so I mean, it's up to the council whether they wanna go that direction or not, but, uh.
We'll, we'll, we'll take. We'll take action. Next meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to take, between now and then, to read it up and decide who we wanna suggest. Okay, cool.
And if you have any questions on any candidates, or you want any more information on any candidates, then please get that to us soon, so we can do that research for you and get it back to everybody.
All right, next item, item B. Text Municipal League, Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees Election.
This item is the same as prior, um, just electing the board of trustees. I, I, I guess Muni Code is not letting me pull up the ballot in front of me, but I think on this one you have multiple choices of candidates to review and elect. Intergovernmental Risk Pool is essentially the city's insurance provider underneath TML. Um, so this will be the board that oversees operations with our insurance provider. They're the ones that cover all of our workers' comp insurance, property insurance, everything related to the city.
So we're, we're casting a vote in all four places, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Any questions or comments?
You want our recommendations next meeting also?
We will, we will have a resolution where you would make those elections next meeting, yes. And again, if there's any other information you'd like to see on any candidates, please get those requests to us, and we'll, we'll get it out to you.
Just so everybody will review the, the bios and, uh, they can do a little digging online and see who you like. So, next item, item B, Staff Report, Terran Area Food Bank and, uh, Community Resource Event.
All right, we were contacted last week by the Terran Area Food Bank, and they asked to host a food and community resource event here in the city. That's why it wasn't brought to your attention at the last meeting. It was kind of a last-minute, um, see if we can do something in the community event, and it turned out to be a great event. Uh, we pushed it out as best as we could through social media and flyers and CTY, um, and the turnout was phenomenal. I was hoping to have some numbers here for you tonight, but unfortunately that, I don't have those numbers just yet. Uh, but I will tell you that being here for both events, I, I checked in at both. There, there were, there was a great turnout, both Friday and Saturday. The event included, uh, free food resources to those that needed it, so they could come up and get free boxes of food. And then there was assistance onsite to help them, walk them through the process if they needed to, for SNAP applications, boost applications, any programs that they may need, and so they had those resources right here onsite to help them out. So it was a, it was a great event overall, and, and the outreach was, was phenomenal.
I know Friday they shut down early 'cause they ran out of supplies, so. So, good event, so. Okay, next item, consideration of possible action. Item A, number, ordinance number eight two one, an ordinance of the city of Edelman, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending chapter seven, titled Fire Prevention and Protection by amending article one, titled Fire Prevention and Protection in General by adding a new section, seven dash five, titled Mitigation Rates for Delivery of Emergency and Non-Emergency Services by Fire Department to Establish and Implement a Program to Charge Mitigation Rates for Deployment of Emergency and Non-Emergency Services Provided or Rendered by the Edelman Fire Department, Providing a Repelling Clause, Providing a Subvariability Clause, and Providing a Savings Clause, and Providing for an Effective Date. So I guess we need to entertain a motion first.
Motion to approve ordinance eight twenty-one as read.
Second.
Let me discuss this. I know there were some questions.
Let's start, 'cause Chief might be able to answer your questions. Do you mind just giving an explanation of the reason and purpose behind the ordinance?
Absolutely. So, we already have a, a version of this, uh, in place. We have been working off the, the original ordinance for, I believe, five years, four or five years now. We brought this to you, um, back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and it's to go, to pursue reimbursement for costs incurred, uh, for responses to motor vehicle accidents, to hazmat, um, incidents or, or structure fires, where there is a, an insurance claim that is pursued for, for losses. Um, and we also bill the insurance company on top of that for the losses and for the incurred fees that we have. There is nothing billed directly to the, to the citizen. We don't send it over to, you know, one, two, three, Russell Road, whatever it may be. We send this directly to the, to the insurance claim. And if there isn't an insurance claim that is made following a motor vehicle accident or, or a fire, then we, we won't be able to claim anything either. Uh, this is just to, A, fees go up, um, and so the original fee schedule that we had didn't have a, a built-in incremental increase, uh, for year to year to, to follow the trends. So we're still working with the, the, the fee schedule that was established five years ago. So we needed to increase those, 'cause obviously everything that we bill for has increased in the last five years. So we needed to increase those, 'cause obviously everything that we bill for has increased in the last five years. Uh, and then to, to, uh, implement an ordinance that has a customary increase year-to-year, um, that follows the CPI. Um, this is, uh, the, the, the ordinance that the attorney took and drafted was based off of an ordinance that was provided to us by Emergifier. That is the same ordinance that is used in countless other cities for their, their contracts as well.
No insurance.
Yeah, that was mine.
No claim. We don't, and we don't bill, so, um, there has to be an insurance claim. Um, there is a, a clause in, within the ordinance that does have an extenuating, extenuating circumstance because we have to do the catchalls. There may be hypothetically somebody that's got, um, some kind of liability um, because of an incident, maybe a criminal act or a, um, um, secondary two that they caused damage to something, and, and there was a fee that could be incurred, and they may not have insurance, but, um, because of the nature of their business that we could bill it directly. Those are very, very, very small extenuating circumstances and not likely to be billed directly to one of our citizens. But it's, it's in there just as, as a, as a fallback for us.
Got it, and this includes like ambulance and all emergency services, correct?
No. This, this is specific to fire. Yeah, so within the, within the ordinance, you can see that there, um, it, it lists out for motor vehicle accidents, for hazmats, for, for fires that are, um, illegal in nature or not illegal in nature. The ambulance fee schedule is with Emergicon. It's completely separate, um, and that one's in place and, and currently active.
Okay, thank you.
Just to highlight, if you recall, one of the incidents that occurred when we talk about having a clause in there to be able to bill, bill individuals, um, prior to us having an ordinance that allowed us to bill for fire response, we had an incident that occurred side, that jar, a very large amount of mercury. That jar broke in the driveway and created a large hazmat response that resulted in the closure of nearby businesses, closure of nearby schools, and then two and a half days of hazmat specialty cleanup that cost the city almost $30,000, um, to, to clean up. Uh, there was no, uh, process for us to recoup those costs. Um, we were able to, fortunately, through an EPA program, get some of that money back. Uh, but, you know, in, in incidents like that where somebody is keeping hazardous materials, those kinds of things, uh, some kind of neglectful act, there's, I think the city should have an avenue to be able to pursue reimbursement on incidents like that. But the intent has always been to not, our goal is to not target citizens for typical fire response. It's a service that we provide. We understand that. All of this has been about trying to recoup cost back incurred.
If, if you, if y'all remember the, the large, I think we went five, six alarms, uh, that unfortunately I had to give the, the, the briefing on the news two, three years ago in Kennedale. Um, that was, that, that incident was secondary to, um, and not any legal act at the time, but, uh, there was a burn bed, not gonna get the legalities of it, but that was billed directly to the individual due to their negligent actions, but that was like senior circumstance. Um, but to add that, also, Rendon, Kennedale, Crowley, all the surrounding agencies also have the exact same ordinance in place. So if we go, we're all doing the exact same thing.
So would you say there's a small percentage of individuals that have to pay out of pocket?
Hit you, Mike.
No, there's, we, we do not bill, we, and it, for a citizen, if it's a, you know, a residential structure fire or something like that, we don't bill any of those. The only time that we would is...
But you bill their insurance.
We bill their insurance, yes.
So that...
Only bill their insurance if they've made a claim. So they've already made the claim for the, the motor vehicle accident or for the loss in their, for their home catching fire. This is just on top of that.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a, just a comment about the format of the document, because I'm me. Um, in the beginning of it, it gives level one, well, under hazmat, page four of it, it looks like, says hazmat, level one, $887, then it discusses it. Under that, level two, $3,166, then it discusses it. But if you go down, and it does the same thing, the title, how much it charges, discussion. Then if you go down to water incidents, looks like page six, the format changes a little. It says water incidents, and then it says level one, it discusses it, and then the amount is listed. It's just my OCD. Is there some reason why that was switched around like that? It, it feels like it should be the same format, doesn't matter which one. That's just my comment on the structure of it.
That would be a question for the attorneys at Emergifier, not for ours.
And I think my OCD-ness would agree with you. Um, that was just the form that was provided by Emerg, what's the name of the company? Emergic Fire, so, so we just kind of adapted it, but we can certainly change it.
Thank you. And it doesn't matter which one, just so it matches. I'm good.
What about non-emergency, um, where you don't file the insurance?
If they don't make a claim, we don't make a claim. Any other questions or comments? Should we poll the council?
Place two.
Nay.
Place three.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, actions concerning appointment to various boards, commissions, or committees.
All right, as you recall, last meeting, this item was tabled. Um, we did receive a resignation from Ms. Dani Soria from the Economic Development Board and have a vacancy there. We did receive an application from Ms. Michelle Hudson, who is here this evening. Um, her application does indicate that she's applying for the BOA. That was just an, an error on the application's part. Her intent is to apply for the Economic Development Commission. So that is before you for consideration, um, or you have the option to make any other appointment as, as Dean.
What do you mean? She's, it says Board of Adjustments, sorry. It says Board of Adjustments, Board of Appeals, but she's really applying for the...
Economic Development Corporation.
We're gonna get that changed on the official form for our records.
We can, if you would prefer.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Oh, okay. OCD.
You already did it on your, okay.
Craig, Michelle, economic development?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
God, but there's no address here.
The address has been redacted. We, we, we just redact the address because these forms are public and can be pulled by anybody on the internet, and so we don't necessarily just advertise any applicant's address. Uh, but I can confirm she is a resident in the city of Everman.
But Daniella Soria's address was not redacted, though on the document up above it.
Oh, it should have been. My apologies if it wasn't.
Something was, but her address is there.
Well, she was moving, so...
Oh, that's good.
Not the point.
Sure.
Not the point.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you.
Okay, so what are we doing? Let's do it.
That's the only one we have, right?
That's the only application we have, yes.
So we'll need a motion?
I move that we accept, let me get this, appoint. I move that we appoint Ms. Michelle Hudson to the Economic Development Corporation Board.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Poll the council?
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four. Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Michelle, we will get you sworn in at the first meeting. Uh, we need to see when we're gonna have that, because they're, uh, they've been kind of infrequent here lately, but, uh, but we'll try to get one, at least get you in there and introduce you to the rest of the board, so... Uh, next, next item is city manager's report.
Um, I've just got a couple things. First, auditors are here this week for mid-year audit. Um, it's going so well. They're cutting their visits short, so that's a good sign. Um, they had planned to be here for two to three days, and it's actually gonna be more like a day and a quarter. So we're thankful. Um, that's, uh, that's just indicative that we're getting very positive responses. But I do wanna remind you, may get, um, you may get a questionnaire that comes in at some point. It may come later in the year, but those are important, that we get back to them. Uh, this auditing firm is very, um, firm on getting those responses from every single one of the council members. Um, and so what we may do is we may actually just bring the form to a council meeting and ask you to complete it right then and there if you need to, uh, 'cause we definitely, they definitely want your feedback, um, regarding that. Uh, we are having our September 11th Remembrance Walk tomorrow, and that's at, uh, 7 o'clock here at, uh, Memorial Park, getting that going. And I didn't hear one compliment tonight from the council about how good the striping on Race Street looks. So if, well, you did, yes, you did. So if you haven't driven on Race Street, when you go home, please drive on Race. It's straight. Yes.
I noticed it, but you've been a little hard to get a hold of today, so...
I've been all over the place today, yes, sir. So the striping has been, uh, redone, um, and it's been done to standard and to code, and it is straight.
It looks really good, yes.
So, um, this is now our... Yes, it does. This is now our preferred, preferred vendor on striping. So everything's there, everything there is good. Um, staff is just working, uh, we're coming up on year-end, so we're trying to get everything cleaned up and ready to go for year-end and start the new budget year. And that's all I've got.
Any questions? Remembrance walk, I thought it was at 9?
No, it's at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. No, ma'am, it's 7:00 PM. Yeah, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM.
Mindy, did, did you have somebody fill out a form to speak? No?
Did you guys, did you grab a speaker's form? Did you wanna speak tonight? Oh, okay, all right, cool. Just checking.
We wanna give you an opportunity to speak, if that's what you were here for, so... Okay, uh, next time's mayor's report. Uh, I gave everybody paper copies of, uh, the city manager's evaluation, if you hadn't done it yet. Uh, they are due at the next meeting, and we'll go into executive session at that point. But everybody needs to fill it out, and Craig can't get better or nobody to do or not do if he's not notified. So, uh, if everybody, please just take the time to fill it out, so... Uh, with that being said, that's all I have, and time is 6:29, and we are adjourned.